Welcome to the July 20th, 2017 zoning board meeting. It is Thursday, July 20th. And we'll call the meeting to order. First part of the meeting, we'd just like to, we unfortunately had a death in our, what about members passed away. We'd just like to take a moment to acknowledge that Frank Litchett passed away recently after brief illness. Longtime board member of all of us here. And it's always been a pleasure working with Frank and over the number of years he's contributed a lot of his time and effort in the board as well as on the zoning board as well as the Board of Health for the number of years.
Yeah. Sorry, we can't hear you very well.
Okay. Is that better?
I can only put it television.
But as I say, we'd just like to take that time to acknowledge his work and effort and a close friend that he's been over the years to us on the board and to the public and his service. He's going to be greatly, greatly missed and we always appreciate his kind words and time that he spent with us. We want to express our thoughts and prayers to his family as well. So I don't know if anyone else sees it.
No, well said.
Appreciate it. With that, we will get on to the first application tonight.
First application is Karen Lynch of Two Cedar Crest Lane, Situate, Mass. Request a special permit finding pursuant to MGL Chapter 48, Section 6 or and/or Section 810.2 of the Situate zoning bylaws to construct a detached garage with accessory living space on a pre-existing non-conforming lot at Two Cedar Crest Lane, Situate. Assessors map 54, Block 1, Parcel 16.
Good evening. For the record, my name is Gregory Morse, I'm a registered engineer with Morse Engineering, representing the property owner Karen Lynch. This is a special permit application in accordance with Section 810.2 of the bylaw to allow construction of a detached garage at Ms. Lynch's property. Above the garage would be finished space. The garage itself being 748 square feet on this property. This property is located in the R2 zoning district. The lot itself is non-conforming with respect to lot area. The lot area here is 17,175 square feet where 20,000 square feet is required. The garage that we're proposing fully complies with the front side and rear yard setbacks. Because of the increase in floor area of more than 20%, we're here for the special permit finding. The existing house, as you see on the plan, is 1,088 square feet in size. The addition of the garage with the living space in it represents a 68.8% increase, bringing the total floor area on this property to 1,836 square feet.
Well, the obvious question I have is, is as I read it, when you're talking about an accessory dwelling, you should be before the planning board, not us.
Sure. We have a separate application in with the planning board for approval of the accessory dwelling, but we have to go in front of you as well because this is a non-conforming lot and we're adding more than 20% floor area. Our planning board meeting is next Thursday.
But you're asking us to approve this garage with living space above and I don't think we have, I don't think we have the ability to do that, do we?
Sure.
As I asked, for the living space above now or are you asking for the dimensional and the 20% increase in the planning board's gonna?
Correct. What we're asking for is the location of the garage with the space being constructed inside of it. The planning board will authorize the use of that space as an accessory dwelling. So whether that's used as accessory dwelling or not, whether the planning board approves that or not, we would be before you with the same application here just because we're finishing that space off.
Otherwise, they would, otherwise he'd be precluded from relief. He can't get what we need to give him from the planning board and he can't get what the planning board needs to give him from us.
This is a, any additional space? If this lot had less than 3,000 square feet more, it would be done by a matter of right. It's the only reason you'd be before us is it's an undersized lot, non-conforming in lot area alone.
Correct.
Your dimensional, your setbacks and all of the new construction, whether it's attached to the house or a detached garage, is by matter of right, except that it's an undersized lot, so you're here before us in that respect. The zoning board, the planning board is the governing authority for the accessory dwelling permit, which is a separate permit that citizens of Situate can get on their existing or proposed structures, but first we have to build it. You can't build it without us.
Correct.
So how is this, Anthony, different than your friend up in, up in mine it? Wasn't this the basic thing?
That's, that's my next question and I was going to ask that of Bob. What's different here, I think, is that we have a dual frontage lot where we didn't have it on that application and he was precluded because he wasn't addressing the need to be 30 feet from the rear line. My question is, do we treat this lot differently because of the dual frontage? That's what was, that's what jumped out at me from this application. Please.
The dual frontage on any corner lot gives you a 30-foot setback from both street lines. This location of new construction meets that in all cases. It meets the side yard setback and then the rear yard being a quarter circle radius from the property point opposite the intersection of the streets. So I don't see that there's a problem with setbacks or dimensionally.
The other thing that jumped out at me is 620.4, Section E, which governs what you were just talking about, begins with the words "with the exception of one-story accessory buildings."
Correct. You can get a one, a one-story building in an R2 zone or an R3 zone only needs to be eight feet from the rear property line rather than 20.
That was one of the questions in mine it because he was going with a story and a half.
Okay.
We got a setback.
So to answer your question, and that's the difference, because they're 30 feet on the arc from the rear corner, this doesn't have the same trouble that that application that you mentioned.
Well, 20 feet actually in this case.
On the, the arc.
I'm sorry, is it 20 feet in the R2?
Eight feet.
I think it is 30.
I'm sorry, 30 feet.
It is 30, but it's.
But at any rate, yes, they.
Right. It's well beyond that, so we're not, so it's just an eight-foot issue from the property line that it's closest to.
Yep.
So is the consensus, we can, we can approve the garage, but we can't approve living space?
They're not, that's not before us.
We can approve living space. We can approve an accessory dwelling.
Right. We can approve this living space.
We can approve this living space. We can, we can approve living space, but we can't approve it as a, as an accessory dwelling. They're proposing it to us that it will be used as an accessory dwelling, but they can't do that until they get a permit from the town.
Right.
Correct.
From the planning board.
Correct. It's our intention to construct a garage on the first floor and then that second, that second floor and the roof to finish that off as living area. We can't utilize that as an accessory apartment until we go to that planning board process. We will finish it off as living space. It will be, you know, on this property. It just can't be utilized as an accessory dwelling until we get that permit.
We approved it tonight and it was to be used as an office until they get that further approval. So be it.
Right, so there's a kitchen or a bath might go in there for the day.
Well, that's what I was noticing. You have in your plan a kitchen and a bathroom and to pretend that it's not an accessory dwelling is a little bit beyond my capability.
But it's not, it's not built.
No, 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 but I don't want it to, I, you know, for me, I, as I look at the plans and see that it's got a kitchen and a bathroom.
In your, that's Bob's role to enforce that and in our decision, it's very easy, in my opinion, to make clear that we're approving a garage with living area and not an accessory dwelling. Even if we wanted to, we couldn't and.
We can reference the planning board that, for that purpose.
The applicant noted to the board that the planning board application for the accessory dwelling permit was pending and we're, so everything's on the up and up, in my opinion.
Your learned opinion.
That's, that's more learned every day at least.
Good.
Any questions from the audience?
No, I generally agree with what Anthony has said. There also may be permits needed for stormwater design if the impervious areas increased over a certain amount and possible work to or review of the existing septic system. This is not on town sewer, I don't think.
No, we, we have a plan in with the Board of Health to increase the septic capacity at this property as well. Permit pending.
So all of, all of those requirements will need to be met before we can issue a building permit.
And if they were, if the planning board were not to approve the accessory dwelling, but we approved the structure, the building of the structure with living space, then you might restrict the building permit with respect to the decision of the planning board vis a vis a kitchen or something like that.
Obviously, yeah. We would actually require a new set of plans that showed other than an accessory dwelling as a use for that area.
Right.
Still scares me because I'm Italian and it's not a house if it doesn't have two kitchens.
You gotta have a summer kitchen and a winter kitchen.
We'll fight that when I, when my parents move into my basement.
Maybe retired by then.
Do we have a motion?
Move to grant the applicant's request for a, I think we, we don't need a.
Finding.
The finding. We just need to grant the special permit under Section 810.2 to construct the attached dwell, the detached garage with living space above.
It's somewhere, somewhere Frank's laughing at us right now.
Right. Yeah, he's, so he was expert at this.
That's right.
By a location plan by Stephen Moran, professional engineer dated 6/6/17. No revisions. And note that the applicant is before the zoning board or will be before the zoning, the planning board with respect to a accessory dwelling permit.
Discussion.
I think in an abundance of caution, we would want to find under Gale as well that the application and the proposed improvements do not create any new nonconformities and to the extent they intensify the existing nonconformities, such intensifications are not substantially more detrimental to the surrounding neighborhood.
I made it, he amended it. You have to second it.
Second.
Or Sarah's the second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Polls?
Thank you.
Hey, do we have a idea of who?
I'll, I'll take it. I'll take that one. All right. All right, the second applicant is George Lavoy, Post Office Box 321, Natick, Mass. Request a special permit finding pursuant to Section 810.2A of the Situate zoning bylaw or MGL 40A, Section 6, to reconstruct a single-family dwelling, adding more than 20% to the gross floor area to a property at 35 Brunswick Street, Situate, Mass. Assessors map 72, Block 4, Parcel 14.
Thank you, Mr. Sherman. My name is Paul Maribito from Ross Engineering Company, representing the owner's applicant who seated to my right, Mr. George Lavoy. George owns the lot at the number 35 Brunswick Street. It has an existing dwelling on it. Is proposed to raise and rebuild his existing dwelling, which is shown in the crossfire area on site plan and submitted. On the easel, the outline of the lot is shown in yellow. The proposed house is in blue. The yellow represents a covered porch and the orange represents an open deck. We filed this under Section 810-2A because the existing nonconformity and the only existing nonconformity is the lot area at 5,600 square feet and the lot frontage at 80 feet. The required lot area is 10,000 square feet and the quarter footage is 100 feet. The proposed construction of the dwelling will meet all the required setbacks. There is a zoning chart on the top of the. You also are using the average setback of the structures on the street for setback. The average setback was 10.6 and the proposed setback will be 100 feet, approximately a foot greater than what's required. Because this is on a barrier beach, the foundation will be on a pile foundation to meet the DEP requirements. The proposed increase in the house is approximately 280%. Right now, it's a one-story dwelling. It does have a full basement in it. The new dwelling obviously will not have a full basement in it. Should the board approve this application or next step prior to a common for building permit would be to go to the Conservation Commission, finally announce some intent to construct the dwelling and also ask for a stormwater permit because there's an increase in the impervious area of 49%. I think with that, I'll end and answer any questions you may have.
Just one quick question, Paul. On the average frontage, did you take, how did you get that?
We want 200 feet in each direction from the two property corners and also to the nearest intersecting street, which on the right was the 10-foot passageway and the 200 feet was under the 23 River Street.
I can tell you, I'm looking at satellite right now. It looks like if anything, they were conservative with their numbers.
Yeah.
Almost every other house on the street is noticeably closer to the street than this one.
Paul, just to, you mentioned that the, it's, we're non-conforming because lot area and frontage. As a non-conforming by width as well, lot width is a, I mean, with the house, just as a, dotting my Ts and crossing my Is, that kind of thing. Okay, so those are the three.
Paul, I'm a little, I was a little confused. Was number 39 within 200 feet to the?
39?
Yeah.
No, on the plan, they show, our lots are 39.
39, so you've got your, your property at?
It's a 37.
You're right. And 39 is just beyond the?
It's on the way.
It might be on the.
Yes.
It's River Street.
Passage way.
No, it's a passageway. You go to the nearest intersecting street?
Is a passageway an intersecting street? That's what I was a little confused about.
The house on that street is closer than 30 feet.
So you got another 10-foot way or something on, at, at the other end after 30, between 31 and 23 River Street?
That's a.
Is there a difference between the two?
That's, that's not a passageway.
What does it show up on the, it shows up on some of their?
Part of the lot.
It's part of the lot.
Part of the lot behind.
How do you, how do you see that? I don't see that. I mean, I'm, I'm not doubting you, I'm just like, where did you come up with that, Ed?
I'm speculating because they're, the, you've got ways behind it. It's not identified on the plan as a way. The engineer has identified a way, whether you call it a passageway or a street or it's a, it's a way. As, as the attorneys, but people have rights in it, so therefore qualify, I would think, as an intersection street and.
Well, no, I mean, again, that's, that's a speculation, but Paul, is, I mean, how do you, how do you distinguish between the two?
You've got the land court plan, it is.
Is it on the side?
76 and 74.
Do you got it? Okay. So Brunswick, so it shows a way on one, but not on the other. Is that, is that, is this what you rely on?
Yes.
Okay. So you wouldn't go, you wouldn't cross the way? The passageway is, passageway and way are the same to, legally?
It's, it's shown as a way on the land court plan.
Okay.
It's, it's a private way, but it is a way.
And the assessors map, the Board of Assessors map that's in the package shows 19 River Street and comes through to Brunswick.
Yeah, that's the lot.
Yeah, okay.
Here, this is the picture.
Oh, that is a good picture.
Four lots to take an average.
Got it, got it.
Now it explains that, doesn't it?
Got it. Yeah, that makes it much, that makes it much clearer to me. Thank you. So I didn't see that in my package.
What's that?
That he just showed me. Did I miss that?
I think that's, that's simply the assessors map on which they generate the cards, mail in for the cards.
Yeah, it didn't come in your package, it came in the folder.
Oh, okay. Got it. I didn't think, I was, didn't want to have missed it.
You have something else? Just, what's the current bedroom count and the proposed bedroom count of the house?
Septic system on the outside. Apparently new system was built.
The current bedrooms are two.
Two.
And the proposed are three.
Three. Okay. Will you be owning the Board of Health for the septic or is it already?
The septic's in place and it was built post Title V after 1995, so.
And it's a three-bedroom.
It's a four-bedroom system.
Oh, so you're coming. Yeah. Are there any questions?
No, I noticed the first floor elevation's proposed to be 18,4, something like that.
First floor, top of the house, yes, 18,4.
Yeah, so well above the 14 that would be the minimum required in an AE13 zone. So that's fine. We'll need an elevation certificate based on the plans and then a confirming certificate after the construction's complete.
And also you'd be filing with Conservation, that was a comment we received.
Yes.
Any questions from the audience?
Well, I don't want to leave it all on, Ed. Motion to grant the application of George Lavoy of Natick, Massachusetts, for the application filed under bylaw Section 810.2A to find that the improvements shown on a site plan prepared by Ross Engineering and dated May 25, 2017, do not create any new nonconformities and to the extent they intensify any existing nonconformities, such intensifications are not substantially more detrimental to the surrounding neighborhood.
Second?
Second.
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I could take that one.
All right, you ready? Third application is John Ganey and Don Marie DePolo Ganey of 170 Stockbridge Road, Situate, Mass. Request a special permit finding in accordance with MGL Chapter 48, Section 6 and/or Section 810.2 of the zoning, Situate zoning bylaw to allow the expansion of their nonconforming single-family home, increase in the gross floor area by more than 20% at 170 Stockbridge Road, Situate, Mass. Assessors map 54, Block 2, Parcel 11. This is the 810.2 day.
Yeah.
Sure. Again, for the property owner, my name is Gregory Morse, Morse Engineering, representing John Ganey and Don Marie DePolo Ganey. This is a Section 6 finding and a request in accordance with Section 810.2 of the bylaw to allow in addition to the single-family residents at that property being at 170 Stockbridge Road. Referring to the plan, Stockbridge Road is at the bottom of the plan. The property line is in black. This property is in the R2 zoning district. It is abutted by residential properties on all sides. This lot itself is nonconforming with respect to lot area. The lot area here is 16,094 square feet where 20,000 is required. It's also nonconforming with respect to lot width. A requirement of 125 feet exists, is required. What exists is 102.59 feet. The property's already developed with a single-family residence. I've highlighted that in brown on the plan. What we're proposing is a 20 by 20 addition. It would be a two-story addition off the back of the house. I've highlighted that in orange on the plan. The house complies with all setbacks, front, rear and side yard. The addition also complies with all setbacks. The nonconformity here again being lot width and lot area. The addition represents a 35.7% increase in floor area at this property. It would bring the total floor area of the house up to 2,044 square feet. Turn it over for any questions.
The percent increase.
Is that on here? The percent?
Yeah, it is. Bottom line and floor area calculations.
All right, I just, I, just for clarification, is one picture of the house, the new addition or?
Not, not quite. The left, the left side of the house had a smaller roof on it and they came in, they applied for a building permit to raise that roof. There was already floor space in that area.
Okay, just.
So that's under construction currently. This is for the addition, which would be off the back. That has not begun yet.
I just did.
Yep. I thought about that when I took that picture, so.
We all thought about it when we looked at that picture.
Yeah.
I didn't.
Okay.
It's been a tough, tough week.
Ed, do you have any questions?
I think this is the same situation where it wouldn't be before us except for the lot pre-existing zoning and that it is nonconforming by width and area.
Ed, say the addition beats all the setbacks, again, the width and the area, nothing you can do about that.
No. This lot was created in 1927. The house itself, per the assessors, was built at 1920, so both predating any zoning requirements.
Sarah, any? Yes? All right. Any questions from the audience? Bob, did you have any comments on?
I just questioned Jeff, is it on town sewer?
It is on town sewer, yes.
Because you're increasing the number of bedrooms.
Correct.
Okay, so no other questions?
Move that the board finds that the, the applicant's, Don Ganey and Don Marie DePolo Ganey, seeking relief, the lot is nonconforming with respect to lot size and lot width. The proposed structure will not increase any nonconformities to the extent that the proposed structure is an intensification. It is not substantially detrimental to the neighborhood and then the existing structure and find that the, and grant the special permit as requested by the applicant in accordance with the site plan dated 6/20/17 by Morse Engineering, Stephen Moran, professional land surveyor.
Second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Who wants that one? dated six-twenty-seventeen, um, by Morse Engineering. Stephen Moran, professional land surveyor.
Second?
Second.
All of them in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Thank you.
Who wants that one? I'll do it though. I can sit down and do it.
I wanted, I wanted that one.
It was like, I'll write that in my sleep.
I don't care. Sarah wants it or?
Who wants this out?
Thank you.
Greg, you're in the hot seat tonight.
I know. It's easy.
Probably hear.
Probably hear someone else speak this time though.
Sure you brought enough guys?
Yes. And the fourth application is John M. Semenski and Mark A. Semenski, trustees of five-seventy-three Countryway, Situate, Mass. Request a special permit and/or other relief that the Board of Appeals may grant pursuant to section six-ten-point-two-B, nine-fifty-point-two-B, nine-fifty-point-three of the Situate zoning bylaw to create a lot more than fifty feet, with more than fifty feet of frontage and two times the required upland square footage at five-seventy-three Countryway and eight Hatchet Rock Road, Situate, Mass. Assessors map, twenty-six, block two, parcel forty-seven. And assessors map, twenty-six, block two, parcel forty-one.
Good evening. I'm Bill Aronberger. I'm here tonight, I have Mike Semenski and Mark Semenski along with Greg Morse. And a little bit of a, just a background, and Greg will explain this, but this has been, uh, Mike and Mark's parents passed away a couple of years ago. This is Semenski family homestead for over sixty years. And in settlement of the estate, this is the, basically the sole asset of this. And Greg's done work here and we're desirous of creating a building lot here. What has happened is Barbara Pye, who lives in Hatchet Rock Road, actually we have under purchase and sale agreement to buy a very small piece from her, which will make Lot Two an over forty thousand square foot lot. And if this, let me, I'll have Greg tell you where we are and what he's done so far.
So for the record, Gregory Morse, Morse Engineering. We were originally hired to go out and survey the Semenski property being five-seventy-three Countryway. The property existed with this exterior property line. We went out, we performed the survey, we found that the lot was slightly deficient in lot area to be divided. Attorney Warren Berger reached out to one of the abutters, abutting property at number eight Hatchet Rock Road, and was able to negotiate the purchase of a small sliver of land, approximately twelve-hundred forty-nine square feet on the back of the lot, Hatchet Rock Road, and convey that over to the Semenski property, which then in turn gives us the requisite area to create two-building lot. Lot one is a fully compliant lot for the R-two zoning district. Lot two would be a forty thousand square foot special permit lot. It has the requisite, a fifty feet of frontage on Countryway. It maintains a width of fifty feet for the access handle. And in total, it has forty thousand sixty-three square feet of area, all of which is upland land area. This plan has been submitted to the planning board for endorsement with the A and R process. We've made the notations required for endorsement on the plan, but Lot Two would not be further subdivided in accordance with the bylaw.
The only thing, Ed, is the house, the assessors' house was built in nineteen hundred and there's an existing driveway that's been there since probably for over a hundred years. And I can go through the criteria of nine-fifty-point-three. One thing I will mention, you did get a letter from one of the abutters pointing out there was an old restriction on the property. And we answered that and it was brought to my attention, I had a typographical letter, it should say section twenty-eight as opposed to twenty-three, I just initialed that on the, on the record copy, but basically twofold. There is no restriction on setbacks, it's expired by law. But nevertheless, it's a seventy-foot restriction in our building area on, not the locus that we're talking about here, but on the other locus, which really isn't the subject of this. Under Lot One, there's, you know, a huge amount of buildable area beyond seventy feet anyhow. But nevertheless, that restriction is inapplicable, it's null and void.
Do you have any questions?
No, I mean, except that I kind of, you know, I'm with you on, we're not being asked to place a house on a lot. If there was some argument that the, that the deed restriction, I'm a little bit confused because the more current, the current bylaw on the deed restriction is a little bit different. Is that correct? You have to, you can renotice it or?
Well, this deed restriction could have been renoticed as well. I agree with the applicant that it's absolutely expired by law. This is a pool I swim in every day. Also, I feel it necessary to say, even if it wasn't expired by law.
It's not before us.
It's not before us and it's not before this board to enforce a private restriction.
Right.
It's before this board to enforce the zoning bylaw and in certain cases, some other laws of Situate or the state of Massachusetts.
Right. Well, and that was my, that was my end result. Whether it's, whether it's good or not, it's like when the building permit's pulled and if it's not seventy-five foot back, if somebody wants to challenge that, then I kind of see that that's the time. Would you agree with that?
I concur, yes.
Okay.
And the only other question, is the purchase and sale for the little slipper of the additional land in our package as well?
Uh, no, I can provide, I can provide you a copy though.
Yeah, maybe we can provide that just, you know, at some point before we, before the decision comes in.
Yeah, yeah, I will give you a copy of that, yes.
I have a further question about that. A purchase and sale is great and absolutely I think it should be part of the application, but that doesn't mean they own that land yet. Are we able to approve this based on the idea that they may own sufficient land?
Well, if you can condition it.
Yes.
Yeah, okay.
The same way with people come in with a purchase and sale, I mean, you know, that they're going to buy the land, but they need our approval to execute the purchase and sale.
Yeah, just so, I will submit to you, I thought it was part of the package. That's actually authorization from the landowner of Hatchet Rock Road.
Okay.
Indicating that we have her permission to then conclude her parcel in this transaction.
She knows why she's giving the purchase and sale, she knows why she's selling the property.
And what we're, what we're proving is the land on the plan. If you don't have the land on the plan, then, then the permit, the permit doesn't work.
The answer makes sense, I just said.
Yeah.
And do I understand this, when that, when that transfer goes through, Lot Three will, will be left with over twenty-one thousand square feet?
Correct, yes.
Okay.
Yes, you're not creating another.
Exactly.
And you said the A and R application's pending.
Yes.
Correct, it should be on planning board next Thursday night.
Should be on Thursday, they'll load it, yeah.
All right, I'm gonna, no, help yourself.
No, I'm just gonna see if I can.
I'm gonna, just, I think we've talked about this before a number of times, but I keep on looking to refresh my memory. The six-ten-point-two-B says that it shall be with respect to fifty-foot frontage lots. It shall be permissible by a special permit granted by the Board of Appeals to erect a single-family detached dwelling on a lot which abuts at least one street or way for a distance of at least fifty feet.
Yeah, I'll explain it.
And because you're creating, you're creating a structure, a lot on a, which already has a structure on it.
Okay.
I know we've.
Sure, we've, we've done this a few times.
I'd like to explain why, so for the audience.
Absolutely, okay. Because the, the, number one, not again, construction, uh, construction. SJC construction is construction things that logically make sense, okay? All the language consistently throughout the Situate zoning bylaw, if you look at, if you look at six-ten-point-two, says no dwelling shall be erected. Six-ten, uh, point-two-B, no dwelling shall be erected. Six-ten-point-one, no dwelling shall be erected. So, and if you go further at the six-twenty-point-three, if you were to interpret this, that it's only for vacant lots, what that means under the bylaw, that no dimensional requirements apply to any lots on which a house exists. So the dimensional requirements only apply to vacant lots. Consequently, anytime, if that was the interpretation was taken, anytime someone razed and reconstructed a house, there is no zoning. Anytime anyone did an addition, there is no zoning, all right? And to take the flip side, which actually amplifies that, if that is the construction, then you go to six-ten-point-three, which is reduction in lot size, and that says no lot upon which a building stands shall be reduced as to whatever. Well, a building stands here and if that's the construction, and if the construction is, this only applies where there is, where there is, that these dimensional requirements only apply to where there is no dwelling, then in that case, what we're doing here, we don't need a special permit.
Again, it's something that.
Has to be addressed.
We need to talk about.
Exactly. But, but to interpret it otherwise would mean that our zoning bylaw does not apply to any lots of which houses stand on, which I don't think is, you know, how, how the bylaw is meant to be interpreted.
Bob, did you have any, anything to add or questions?
Uh, no, no really, John, I think it's pretty straightforward.
Any questions from the audience?
Can I just make sure?
Yeah, but you just state your, your name and address for the record.
Stephanie Curtis and I reside at five-seventy-nine Countryway. I guess I'm a little confused because this isn't what I thought this meeting was about and I think Sarah, you mean, so this is simply a reconfiguration of this lot. It has nothing to do with approving to build something that is not up to regulation, building code.
Correct, correct.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
Yes. Joe Brown at five Hatchet Rock Road. The neighborhood has a, in my opinion, a bad problem of drainage and I'm just wondering if it can be done to improve the drains because you can clearly see with the, with the existing properties now, that when there's a good rainstorm, there's a lot of runoff comes off our building, which is actually coming down up through our neighborhood. And one of our neighbors, or a lot of the people in our neighborhood have, you know, water puddling because water does not properly drain down. And I, I'm just wondering if this construction here, which I can see in the future would be a couple dwellings, how that's going to interfere with drainage, drainage situation? Make it worse or are they gonna do something to improve?
Well, just two things. One, the new construction is the bottom lot on the right-hand side. The existing building, part of their rights, they can't add another lot to the upper lot, so there's only going to be a single-family home there. So the only area they can build a new home on is the lower area. And Greg might be able to address that, the steps they have to take for drainage requirements as they apply for the permit too, if they're going to be going in front of some boards so that all the drainage remains on site.
Well, just to clarify what you just said, they wouldn't be precluded from raising the home that now sits on the rear lot and reconstructing a different.
Correct.
But if you did that, you have to comply with Situate stormwater bylaws.
Yes.
And all of the zoning bylaws.
Yes, and all of the.
So things should improve.
Okay, so then you're saying there's not going to be, there's only one dwelling built and not a second dwelling on the other lot?
No, because they've given up that right as part of this application, they've doubled their lot size.
No, no, no.
I don't think you're speaking the same. There could be two, there's two lots here and there could absolutely be a home on each.
Okay, but this isn't, this isn't the place to discuss that, the drainage and all of that.
Right.
You're, you're just going for.
Creation of a lot.
For the fifty, fifty feet.
We're going for a special permit for the, yeah.
Okay.
It's a big difference, but again, the whole construction of the house will have to go through, you know, if a new house gets built on, on what's, what's marked as Lot Number Two, if they raise and reconstruct it, there's a whole new set of bylaws that are going to be required to be, and your draining should actually really improve. You shouldn't have any runoff from this lot. So they may be complaining about your lots, but you won't probably be complaining about theirs.
We're new construction at five-seventy-nine.
So you're probably good.
And Mr. Green has been at our house for months because of drainage issues.
Yeah.
That whole section in there, it's, it doesn't matter if we're going to have drainage issues.
So they'll, yeah, you'll, you'll have an opportunity to really talk about that, I'm sure, in the future at a different board.
I have one question.
Just your, just your name and address.
Lynn Johnley, twenty-seven Hatchet Rock Road.
Thank you.
And I'm questioning the deed. Where the deed that John Semenski.
Tore it.
Says that it's precluded at seventy-five feet or more. Is this why they're going for a special permit?
Oh. So, so to clarify that, my reading of the.
Because the deed hasn't changed from when it was in nineteen twenty-one to now.
The deed, the restriction in the deed is expired by statute. It's at least arguably no longer enforceable. And it would only be enforceable, again, arguably, by the party that put that restriction in place. Even if it was still enforceable, if it was less than fifty years old, that restriction says, it basically, it creates a private setback of seventy-five feet from Countryway. So even if that deed was enforceable and they tore down the existing home and built a new home within seventy-five feet of Countryway or on the second lot, it would only apply to structures which were within that seventy-five feet. But it's, it's rather clearly expired by statute.
I have just one other question. Fifty feet from the sidewalk or fifty feet from the street?
Generally, when we discuss setbacks for the Situate zoning bylaw, it's from.
The property line.
Lot line.
Yeah.
And so there's really no way to tell precisely where that property line is relative to the sidewalk or the street unless you get it surveyed by, by an engineer.
But in terms of the deed, we can't speak to that because it was a private restriction. It's open to private interpretations and in this instance, it's expired, so there isn't much reason to.
Is there another question? Okay. Anyone else? Do we have a move?
Move, move to grant the special permit to the applicant under six-ten-point-two-B to create a lot with fifty-foot frontage as indicated on a plan by Morse Engineering dated June twenty, two thousand seventeen. And to condition that simply upon acquisition and control of the portion of land indicated on that plan.
And also there will, there'll be a seminal of the purchase and sale agreement.
I'll, I'll email that by tomorrow morning.
That'd be fine.
Okay? And I'll also, oh, well, you haven't voted yet.
Do we have a second?
Seconded.
All of them in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I'll submit a proposed decision, I'll get it over there.
That was mine.
Huh?
This was supposed to be mine.
Nope, 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 don't, don't listen to him.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Credit for that one. Or even whether the older ones or the new restrictions, if before they expire, you basically re-record it or record notice of it.
Right. So was the, which, which statute was the one they sent or the one?
I deal with, I deal with that statute every day. Because we remove restrictions from title based in reliance on the statute. And I actually searched the title to make sure that they didn't record a re-notice. And they didn't.
Okay, yeah, I thought it was like, but I was like, you know what?
All right, the fifth application. Christian and Kristen Putnam of eighty-one Glades Road, Situate, Mass. Request a special permit finding in accordance with MGL chapter forty-eight, section six, and/or other relief of the Board of Appeals may grant and a flood plan plane special permit in accordance with the Situate zoning bylaw, section four-seventy-point-six, subsequent to the purchase of. subsequent to the purchase of seventy-nine Glades Road, to raise the pre-existing non-conforming dwelling at seventy-nine Glades Road, assessors map five, block three, parcel twenty, and reconstruct in addition to eighty-one Glades Road, situat Mass, assessors map five, block three, parcel twenty-one.
Evening, folks. My name is Steve Corsaro, and I'm an attorney from Tifanxian McDonald Welch and Satchetella. I represent Christian and Kristen Putnam at eighty-one Glades Road. And so we're here to, a little bit of a protracted scenario for us. We are buying, or we have a purchase and sale to purchase seventy-nine Glades Road from a court-appointed receiver. The property at seventy-nine has been, it's a border health foreclosure. And what the Putnam's hope to do is, as the owners of eighty-one, which is also a pre-existing non-conforming, it's in the R-three zone, they only have fifty-five hundred square feet of lot area, and so they have non-conformities in the lot with frontage and side yard setbacks. They are wanting to purchase seventy-nine, which doesn't meet any of the requirements. It doesn't meet area with frontage, rear or side yard setbacks, and basically tear down the existing structure that's there, and then expand eighty-one over to, into the exact same footprint of what is seventy-nine Glades Road. The only difference in the footprint being is that currently there is approximately less than a foot between the two properties, and so just sort of filling in that space.
So you can no longer pass a piece of paper between the two.
No, no longer, no wind tunnels. So it doesn't create, we're eliminating some non-conformities in lot seventy-nine because lot seventy-nine itself is just non-conforming in all respects. And we are
Non-conforming inside, rear.
Yeah, it's, the, the lot itself is
Side lot width.
Yeah, it's, it's lot area, lot width, frontage, side yards, rear yard, and setbacks. So we'd be eliminating
One whole.
Lot.
As part of the merger.
Yes, yes. And that is the intention too, is that after the project takes place, that it will become one lot. We're also, as a result of the proposed project, will be eliminating all of the border health violations, and also retiring a failed cesspool septic system at seventy-nine. So we see that we're eliminating a lot of non-conformities, and the expansion of the non-conformities at eighty-one by expanding over to seventy-nine, we just don't, we don't see as being, you know, substantially detrimental to the neighborhood.
And actually, it never really increased the, I mean, with eighty-one sets now, you haven't increased their non-conformity.
No, I mean, no, because the, the non-conformities that are there as far as front and side setbacks for the existing structure at seventy-nine are really just going to be, it's going to be an extension from eighty-one over to that same footprint. So not increasing what is already there.
So no, I noticed the, the footprint's a little angled there from the street. One corner's closer, so no portion of the front of the structure that's now seventy-nine will be coming closer to the street?
No.
So whether you keep the angle or you just bring the closer corner back?
Yeah, we'll, yeah, we'll bring it parallel with eighty-one.
Oh, you like straight lines?
So although, so in other words, it won't be more than five point one eight then?
No.
Right, so you could, okay.
Yeah, we will not go outside of the existing footprint of seventy-nine, the structure of seventy-nine, except for, to connect to eighty-one.
To the north, right.
And so we're here for two special permits, so I guess we can take them one at a time because the property's also in the town flood plain.
Why, I don't, why do you think you need two special permits?
Well, I'm just saying, it's, we have two issues. And that, and with the town flood plain, you know, the construction that we, that takes place here is going to
Oh, 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 flood, flood, flood plain special permit.
Yes.
Okay, I'm sorry. I'm, yep.
I guess one at a time.
Right. So that's going to have to be raised, I assume?
Well, no, because the, the structure to be built is going to be a garage on the first floor, so there's not going to be any living space on the first floor. And the second floor will be a living room. There's going to be no plumbing, there's no bedrooms. So we're not increasing any, any septic flow to eighty-one system. And we will be complying with the, you know, the requirement, the definition of, you know, what a bedroom is and
So you don't have to do pilings?
No.
Oh, okay, that's good.
What's the, the current elevation of eighty-one then, the first floor elevation? Is that?
Fifteen point seven.
She puts that?
Yeah.
Oh, okay, fifteen, all right, so it's above the fourteen feet, all right.
So eighty-one's not getting raised and reconstructed?
No.
It's just going to get expanded over to seventy-nine?
Other than the southern wall, it's not being touched?
Yes.
I mean, to a certain extent, owner of that lot could come before us to do a lot more non-conforming of the structure to raise and reconstruct seventy-nine Glades, yeah.
So Stephen, on a, on a, and I'm not sure this is before us, but, you know, on a technical basis, what do you do? Do you rewrite the deed so it encompasses both lots?
Uh, no, because what we, we won't have to do that because if there's common ownership between the two, it'll eventually merge. And so then it'll just be two deeds, and when we convey, we would have to, I mean, if we want to go through the process of doing that to kind of make things nice and clean and clear at the registry, but if we have, if we own both parcels, um
It's, the bylaw treats it as one lot.
Yeah.
And it's, you have two lots, it's, it's extra work, and there's nothing to be gained by making two lots one.
No, and we actually, we, we thought long about that because obviously, the highest and best, most valuable use of a lot is to have a single-family residence on it. And so there was a thought of, do we buy this and reconstruct and have two separate, but that is not what the applicants want to do.
So essentially, by merging, you've kind of given up your right as a, as that to become a separate lot?
Yes.
Well, that would be my issue.
There's a strong argument that they have not.
Um, I think that the doctrine of merger, because you, if you are a common owner of two abutting lots, they're both non-conforming, and merger is about putting the two together to lessen non-conformities.
But not until you actually remove the building.
Well
Right, which is one of the
By joining the building, there is an abandonment argument that the town and this board might likely make.
Well
Then if they, if they treat it as one structure for a certain amount of time, they've abandoned the non-conformity.
I agree.
And then, yeah, the town could certainly make that argument.
Simply taking the building down would be a case of abandonment.
Well, not if they don't put that out.
Because we're going to do it under a special permit. It's going to be clear what their intent was.
Yeah.
And then that, that creates a situation where they have abandoned the
Yeah, we'd have the two years to reconstruct, and also to, when we do reconstruct and they're joined.
The abandonment continues.
Well, yeah, well, it's, because if the two buildings are joined and there's common ownership, I think that merger does, I mean
Not in a zoning sense.
If you kept the building separate, just because you own two lots next to each other, they wouldn't, they wouldn't merge. Because you're treating them as two lots, I, the town would have a difficult time not allowing that lot to continue as a separate lot. But they are abandoning the non-conforming structure on that lot by making it part of another structure.
So I think for me, to prevent the future, someone coming in and tearing down, you know, separating the buildings and then thinking they've got a separate house lot, I, I think I would want to condition it on the fact that, you know, you lose your status to have a separate independent individual home on seventy-nine.
I don't, I'm of the opinion that this board doesn't have the power to do that. When they have treated it as a single-family home for a certain amount of time, the bylaw already allows for that.
Where's it sitting?
Well, it's, it would be abandoned. We've denied a pre-existing non-conforming lot because of abandonment before.
Yeah, but it's, it's not going to, it's not going to be, it's going to have a house on it, and the house is going to be connected to eighty-one.
The non-conforming independent structure at seventy-nine Glades Road will be abandoned.
Will kind of disappear and become eighty-one.
When they make that part of eighty-one. Eighty-one will have its own non-conformities, which it will be able to maintain. There will be no non-conformities at seventy-nine, and therefore will be abandoned.
Why do you say there's no non-conformity?
The applicant will not be treating it as two homes.
Right.
So, but us precluding that now, I don't feel is within our right. And if tomorrow or in two years, they don't build this, and they want to go ahead and have a separate application for seventy-nine, that's within their right.
Oh, I don't think so. If they, if they tear it down tomorrow, and they don't do anything for two years, that's abandonment.
Well, yes, over two years, yes.
Over two years.
But if in a year, that we don't have the power to take that right away. They have the ability to give it up, and then we have the ability to enforce that they gave it up.
Well, I, I don't know that we're, I don't know that we're on different pages here or on the same page, but speaking differently. But if they were to tear it down tomorrow, and
And it was gone for two years?
I don't even know if it has to be gone. I'm not sure. I, I think it would be gone for, if it's gone for two years, you can't build on it again. It's a non-conforming lot.
That's right.
You would agree with that?
Yep.
All right.
And I think the same applies if they combine it with eighty-one upon the passage of two years. It's also, the non-conforming structure on seventy-nine has been abandoned.
Do you agree with that, Bob?
I think I do. I think I do, Sarah.
Yeah, it's not
I mean, so if seventy-nine ceases to exist, and the two-year statute starts to run, right, when it's been, when it's been taken down, um, yeah, I don't see how you would then go back and make the case that that, that separate lot continued in existence. I mean, the merger doctrine's for, for empty land, not for, not for two homesites.
Absolutely, right.
That's, yeah, my, that would be my point, the
And merger requires intent. Your intent would happen once your project was built.
Right. But if this were, if seventy-nine were a vacant lot today, and they were to buy seventy-nine with the intention to do this, this type of a plan, they'd be merged when they bought it, the separate, the merger doctrine would take place. The, when the structure at seventy-nine comes down, it's effectively becoming an empty lot. They do have two years to rebuild, and then it's abandoned if they don't. Then it would merge as an empty lot to eighty-one. Eighty-one, their intent here, and what they're presenting to us, and we're going to, if we grant a permit, will be essentially abandoning the single-family use of seventy-nine on the implementation of the permit. Not, if we, if we grant the permit, and they choose to not do anything with it, their rights in seventy-nine don't change. If they move forward with the permit, they'd be effectively abandoning their rights to seventy-nine.
And if they're only here to build an extension of eighty-one on seventy-nine, it's unnecessary for us to add some restriction that they can't build an independent home on it.
And at, and at any time in the future, that they want to do anything with either seventy-nine or eighty-one, they'll have to come before us again.
They've got to come back.
And this, and this special permit will be cited. So I don't think we need to
And if it's not apparent on principle, I, I don't like the look or practice of us putting restrictions on real property when our ability to do so is questionable, and there's no practical benefit to the town in our doing so.
I think they've already put the restrictions on themselves.
It's a, it's a dangerous practice, in my mind.
Bob, do you have anything else?
No, I mean, the only thing that occurs as a minor detail, when this is constructed, as has been described, you'll need flood vents in the garage to allow passage of water and that sort of thing. But other than that, it looks like it easily can meet the code requirements from our department.
I take it the new, new second floor will merge with the existing second floor, so you've got to walk across instead of stepping down.
Yep.
Any questions from the audience?
Just, I mean, folks who are here tonight are to support the application. We actually have an additional letter to support it. Just because, I mean, if folks are familiar with the history, and again, the border health foreclosure, I think everybody's very much looking forward to this project going forward and reminiscing a negative situation that's been longstanding in the neighborhood.
Actually, if you want to submit that letter to Andy, if you could in the file? So we have two motions there.
How about I take the first one?
All right.
Motion that the board grant the special permit requested by Kristen and Christian Putnam to allow the raising of the structure on seventy-nine Glades Road and an addition to the structure on eighty-one Glades Road to extend into the property currently known as seventy-nine Glades Road with the condition, well, and those structures and lots being shown on a plan by Fieldstone Survey Services dated June twenty-third, two thousand seventeen, and that the board grant that special permit with the condition that any addition to eighty-one Glades Road not fall beyond the current footprint of the seventy-nine Glades Road property as shown on said plan, except for the northerly footprint of said seventy-nine Glades Road running towards the existing eighty-one Glades Road structure. And also that the board grant the special permit under bylaw Section four seventy point six F?
Yep.
Finding that said improvements and additions comply with Sections one through three of Section F.
That finding conditioning, I think you wanted to say.
Well, no, we, we know what they're going to build, right?
No, we don't. I mean, we don't have a building plan. I think that's not to us to think.
Yeah, it would be conditioned.
Conditioned that it shall comply
Right.
With Section one point three.
Correct.
Second.
Discussion?
Nope.
And the only thing I, well, I guess we've kind of stated, if they decide to level the, or parallel the property, that it could come in some, that's fine.
Within it.
Yep. Any others in favor?
Aye.
Both? Thank you.
Thank you, folks. If you'd rather, I will oppose the decision.
You're welcome.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Everybody.
Thank you, folks.
Well, it looks like Pocket, Pocket was a little tight over there at the beginning. Probably makes a little loose job.
Steve, you doing all right?
Barely parked a shopping cart on that land.
Do you want the shopping cart?
Uh, no, thank you very much.
Do.
Or any, or any of the other stuff.
Do those next minute?
Yeah, that's a vast improvement.
Did you think that was going to fly? As soon as you said it, I started to duck.
Good luck.
Thank you, Steve. So we have minutes to approve.
Thank you, thank you for something. Oh, no.
Which ones?
We do. I mean
Which ones would you like?
We have to do something, and it's happening. And June, May, John and Sarah, they were all there.
Okay.
Yep.
And they never have
June, John wasn't here.
Motion?
June, we got the issue.
Well, I should do accept May minutes as submitted.
Seconded.
Almost stated.
Aye.
Motion to accept the June minutes pending confirmation from Town Council that that's acceptable.
I think, did you, no, do we have?
Did you already speak to someone about this?
Did you call and check on the rule of necessity? I'm not sure if that really applies or not.
I tend to think that it's going to be, so I think we should put on record that
Adding approval.
That we approve them in our individual capacity. So motion for myself and Ed to approve the minutes from June.
Second.
If anybody's watching, the, the issue is, is that there were just three members here that night, and Frank being one of them, so he's not here to approve. So you cannot have three people approve, but there's no one else to approve them. And you know what? I could care less if they're, sit out there forever, unapproved, whatever.
Yeah, I, I tend to think Town Council's going to see the necessity there.
Yeah. Yeah. We might get yelled at for, for spending money trying to find that out. Not a, not a big issue.
Do we have a motion to adjourn?
Move to adjourn.
Seconded.
All of the favor?
Aye.
Aye.